All of the French Town Council have come to order.
Robert Miller.
Here.
Jeff Bass.
Here.
Homer Cox.
Here.
Terry Craig.
Here.
Terry Hollis.
Here.
Six out of six, we got four.
Does everyone stand? All of us, please, to the pleasure.
Please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joe, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes. Our Father, we come to you tonight and we ask for wisdom as we deliberate that we can take action that will improve our town and bring honor and glory to you. We pray for our nation and all the states and all the governments that are going through an election process that Holy Spirit will come upon the population and that the folks that win these elections will recognize you and honor you and lead in such a way as to take action that will be pleasing in your sight. We pray for all the problems across the world, Lord. It seems like that things spring up frequently, too frequently, and we pray that you would step in with your wisdom and resolve all these issues. We pray for our servicemen and women home and abroad, give them peace and comfort. We ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Any corrections?
I have one opening here.
Can you make a motion? You were even here.
Well, the reason me not being here is how I called it to let it understand on the third page where it says, offer pressure washing company forced to depose.
Yeah.
Could we put a deck there because I thought we were going to lay the paint off or something.
Any other changes? Do I hear a motion to approve?
So was. Second.
Call the roll, please.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes, sir.
Homer Cox.
Yes.
Terry Craig.
Yes.
Terry Hollis.
Yes.
Robert Miller.
Comments from the citizens?
My name is Mimi Brock and we had our Fall Festival meeting today and I was asked by Teresa Frills, who was headed up the committee, if I would come and personally thank all of you for all of the help that you were for us. Had quite a successful festival and the money is still being counted so we're not sure exactly how much we've made. I know Cecil, you may have a report later, but we do thank you for all the help that you gave us over and above what was expected. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the citizens? Comments from city manager?
Thank you and before I start, I'd like to thank everybody, if I haven't already, for the confidence that you all have entrusted me with and instilled in me. Hope I can do you a good job and know that my door is open any time for any thing that needs to be addressed. Go free to call me or email me or come by. In the four short days that I've been here, there's a lot going on and a lot of it is good stuff. I'm impressed. Road maintenance is currently underway utilizing Roger Duncan. We've paid three invoices this month totaling just under $10,000 and the following streets are listed there. There are still a number of streets that need to be addressed and attention given to and he is currently doing that. There are three vehicles that you all have classified as surplus. We are in the process of positioning those and taking pictures and giving descriptions and putting them on the internet for sale. I'll give you an update on what those have sold for when that happens. And there's also a couple more pieces of equipment that I may be bringing to you for consideration for surplus. We're evaluating those right now. The inmate crew are continuing your all's efforts on keeping the town looking nice, not only mowing but and pressure washing the library. We're also applying a coat of protectant stain on there so that you don't have to pressure wash it quite so often and it'll keep looking good like it is now. The Title VI training that I know you all are familiar with and the mayor has done and comprised a manual on, we are required to train all the employees to be in compliance for the grants and that's annually. We have to do that as well as for new employees. We're doing that now. We're going through and working on that training and that should be completed by the 30th of November. The final thing that I have for you is fall cleanup is upcoming, I believe, on November 8th and the street department is working diligently towards that date trying to get everything ready for then. Any questions?
Mr. Shillings, would you like to give us an update since you were helping with the festival, helping with the preparation of festivals?
I gave you a list. We mainly was, of course, we didn't do it all the time, but we focused really on the October Sky areas on the litter, but the city crew done an excellent job. Of course, you could say, well, we done all the litter, the library, we had a broken support post and different things like that. We mowed, picked up, cleaned up all the sidewalks. Carrollhead Park, we did some painting down there and different things, but we mainly focused on these certain areas where the main streets, there's going to be a lot of traffic. But of course, my opinion, I'm always a litter guy. I prefer litter. I hope we can keep this area going, especially our main roads that's doing a lot of traffic. Anyway, I'd like to thank the town employees for their support and outstanding job performance during the week. And sir, I had the pleasure of working probably the first time all day long with this thing and it's really amazing and very interesting and I was honored to do that. And y'all have a good thing going. Couple things we needed to address, but we'll do that later. Anyway, that's what we did. We picked up a lot of garbage, paved a lot of sidewalks, done a lot of mowing.
I will say this, the city looked as good as it's ever looked. All of our city employees did a really fine job getting prepared for the festival. I keep getting comments from all of the citizens, not just one or two, about how well the city's manicured and that didn't just happen last week, that's been over a period of months that that has been happening. So I'd like to thank everyone for their support. Solid waste, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. We did get a contract, two proposals on that. I did meet with Hannah Solar and they are, they want to come and make a presentation to us. I've got to provide them some information, but they would like to install a solar system and at no cost to the city. The city would share in the revenue from that and that revenue should be about 10% or 15% less than what we're paying for our current power bills. I have not contacted CUV about streetlights because I did talk to Hannah about the feasibility of installing streetlights with solar cells to eliminate any power cost at all. Anderson County is going to charge us $982 to reappraise the property in Oliver Springs on the Anderson County side and they'll do that every year going forward for the next 40 years and then the price will change again. I'd really like for the council to authorize me to negotiate an agreement with Anderson County so that they pay us for the benefits of having the fire hydrants and for the water that they consume for their fire department. Also, I would like to recommend to the council that they make Miranda Raby, the new water department person, a permanent employee. She finished up her 90 days last week and she's really, really improved the operations quite a bit. When she took over, we were doing double receipt entry. We eliminated that process and went to a single receipt entry. Overtime cut from 20 hours a week down to 7 hours a week and as we go forward, I think we'll get down to less than that. But she did obtain some procedure manuals and she created procedures for the water department and that we haven't had in the past. And I don't want this to sound like the previous person wasn't doing their job, but they'd done it so long they didn't need any procedures or any manuals to help them find their way. And we also corrected our procedures for tracking water consumption on inactive accounts and we corrected that a couple of weeks ago with that one person. We need to talk about scheduling a workshop for our handbook and we'll talk about that more in a few minutes. But can I have a motion that we make Miranda a permanent employee with the pay retroactive to her 91st day, which was last week?
So, ma'am.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Comments? Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Homer Cox.
Yes.
Terry Craig.
Yes.
Terry Hollis.
Yes.
Robert Miller.
Now, concerning Anderson County, they used about $95,000, 95,000 gallons of water last year and that's their estimate and maybe more or less than that. But we do have fire hydrants up Dutch Valley and then up Highway 61 going to Dawson. And if they feel the necessity of charging us for the reappraisal, I think they should be able to compensate us for the water and for the fire hydrants. Discussion.
We pass due.
I'll make a motion, authorize you into a contract.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll.
Now, are you authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract that will be signed upon terms to decide upon by the mayor? Are you asking the mayor to negotiate and come back with a proposal to be approved by this council?
Negotiate a proposal to be approved by the council.
Okay.
I will never sign a contract without the approval of council. That's not my position.
Okay. You ready?
Yes, please.
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes, sir.
Homer Cox.
Yes.
Terry Craig.
Yes.
Terry Hollis.
Yes.
Robert Miller.
And I do appreciate Chris Mason, he's really taken hold. We have a lot of opportunities. We want to move the city forward and I see that happening. Comments from town council? Robert?
Yes, sir, I have just a couple. First of all, midway drive on the east end of town coming from this way, it's pretty heavy load with, it's got a lot of signs of it coming up to the bridge there. If they get a chance, if they get a chance quite better, picking up a couple of tires, just some stub that people threw out. And traffic lot over here on the west end, when you're setting to go over Fort Harriman, nobody in the left-hand turn lane coming to town with the light with Darryl comes on when nobody's sitting there so that sensor is either bad or something going about. And that was just replaced when they paved that about a year ago, if it's been a year. So, I don't know who that would fall in on.
I think it's position because it works sometimes and sometimes it don't.
Yeah, because every morning when I come.
Depends on where you end up on the sensor.
When I catch a light, you're sitting there and there's not a soul sitting there in there and it turns left, it'll come on and it holds the traffic up coming next round and it cycle through. And there's a street light out over here curving back to the city garage. That's all I have.
Mr. Bass?
I'd just like to commend the city employees and the people from the social society on their job well down on the October Sky. I was down there, it looked real good and everything, because the people were busy, our employees was busy doing what they needed to be doing. I believe that's all I have.
Mr. Cox?
Until we build new bathrooms at the park, we need to repair the roofs and eaves of the building. It's about to fall in on both sides. That's one of the things down at the park. I wish we'd start planning some bathrooms, permanent bathrooms that is better than what we have. Those will work till we get something different. Paving, did we ever get the paving cross from the high school on Bernie? Did we ever pave that little hole over there where we had to cover for repair the sidewalk?
I don't know.
He was supposed to done that a couple of weeks ago. Well, just wrapped while it was.
That on his list?
I don't know if it's on his list, but I did drop by there today and I did, I think I see what Councilman Cox is referring to and it hasn't been given attention to yet or I'll follow up on it.
There's several feet that's going to be cut out, repaved. That cover it hasn't been looked at, I'd say then.
No, that's fine.
That cover it also from there to the creek needs to be cleaned. It's, we're not sure if it's clogged all the way at the other end. They were supposed to run the camera through it and when we got the camera back from that line, I advised them not to boil it in there. It's what tore the camera up. We don't know if that's what tore it up, but it was in that handle when it tore up.
I ask Bradley to focus on repair water leaks for the last three weeks.
That needs a man to go out in it and take the debris out. If you want me to, I'll come do it for you. I won't charge a nickel. I mean, I'm my people straight going that cover. It's plenty big for me to get through, so.
You don't need to be in there.
Well, it needs to be done or we're going to have the same problem out now.
We'll have.
That's going to end up costing us $6,000, $7,000 for that paving and the work, so.
I'll have them to go down with the many eggs down there next to the creek and open it up down there and see what looks like.
But it's got debris in it that we seen with the cameras that needs to be taken out. Looks like logs, a drive shaft, things like that, it's in it.
It's wedged in there, it's too tight and it's hard if you get it out. Hard for anybody.
No, it's not tight.
It's not wedged?
It's laying in there on the bottom. You have to just go through there and pull it out. Handle somebody.
You don't look like you need to be crawled through.
I can make it. I can make it. I'm just tired. I've been, I've been real busy with a sick road and I think everybody here that heard about it, I think for your parents, he was in a very serious car accident last Monday week. Wasn't expected to live, but he's made it thus far and he's had three operations thus far and there'll be many more. Just continue to pray for it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Craig?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Mr. Hollis?
Yeah, I have one item and I guess we take the work order to fix. At the intersection of Kingston and Popper, it's close to the high school, there on the sidewalk, look like it kind of made a gradient, you know, there's a hole in the sidewalk, I guess for drainage and there's a gradient sitting there and somebody's drove a truck over it. So the ends are curled up, so it's a bad trip and hazard. You know, might fix it by flipping it over or something. And I guess, this is more of a suggestion, if we have any time with the road crew, can we have a look at the Wind Rock Road from the four lane, as far as they can go, don't consider limits, you know, maybe for cleanup for the jamboree, just kind of get, you know, pitch in on that. And I'd like to, I did get the last meeting, thank Homer for his town overseer work. Went above to be honest, duties of doing that. And fall cleanup is the seventh. I'd like to suggest everybody tell their neighbors and friends that, you know, it's a good chance to get rid of some of this stuff that you keep getting rolled up for, you know? And that's it.
Mr. Shillings?
Just one thing, I wanted to ask, you heard any more or we contacted anyone about our amusement tax proposal?
No, I've got to do a little more research on that. What he's specifically talking about is whether we'd charge tax on the Wind Rock permits. There's some discussion about whether we should have been charging tax on that all along and I'll do the research to determine whether.
I know you've been busy, but. I'll bring you that idea. It helps on the way.
Helps on the way.
I'm missing out on the face of that fire.
Anything else? One of the other things I did want to mention, during the jamboree Saturday, their sewer line collapsed up at the campground. That was not city sewer line, that was on their side. And we did have three people that worked up there all day Saturday getting that repaired, but they did agree to reimburse us for that cost. So even those three, even those three people worked overtime for, I think it's about nine and a half hours, we'll get reimbursed for that. And they were very appreciative, you know, that we responded the way that we did. Comments from the police department?
You know, turn in the report, I mean, he's a sergeant, he's been a sergeant and done all the work with him, no time he's been here, says he's done an excellent job, he's learned all the paperwork, he's learned everything the way we do, all brushed up, he's watched his driving, contacted citizens, complainants and offenders, paperwork, everything, says he's done a great job. Since coming to work for us, he's, he's been leading the department since he's come in charges. He's had 14 drug charges, 22 drug-related charges, seized a vehicle, $500 of money and like I said, he's been leading the department in charges so far.
And two DUIs?
Yeah, and two DUIs on top of that.
Well, I'll make the motion that we hold it on full time. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Would you call the roll, please?
Robert Miller.
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass.
Yes.
Homer Cox.
Yes.
Terry Craig.
Yes.
Terry Hollis.
Yes.
Robert Miller.
Mr. Kennedy is doing a good job and if you've been looking at your police reports, you can see all the arrests and the citations that he's issued. You know, a lot of times we look at our police force and we think that they just stay on the four lane watching for speakers, but they do a lot more than that, a lot more than that. Fire Department?
For our last quarter, we had 112 calls with our fire department. Fire department, we've had four members that have completed their first responder training. One has passed the state test, the other three are yet to take it. They are scheduling theirs. We've had three firefighters with completed life burn training and we got turned down for two AFG grants that we attempted to try for. This upcoming quarter, we're in the process, we're going to be doing some hydrant testing. We're going to update and do some host testing also. We've started a new pay scale and also doing the mandatory monthly 12-hour standby spray rinse.
Are you going to color code or paint the tops of the fire hydrants to pressure?
By my understanding, we will be doing that. Any questions?
We're going to spit the hack with some of them. It's underground. We've got a few that's almost underground.
We'll do the reports on that.
The water department has to do it, but you guys might pull them out.
Yeah, we've actually got some reports from before we've done the testing with the hydrants previously. I'll get with Justin and see if we can't get the reports back to the water department.
I know of two and we've probably done two more than that. Okay. And one other comment, I was commenting on my brother's accident. The first responders were excellent. I don't have any kind of longer springs, the Marlow guy was there first, I think, but he drove excessively fast to get there. But glad that he didn't make an accident. Sometimes we have accidents going to an accident, but don't kill yourself getting there, try to get there safely quick. Appreciate you that.
I agree completely. Thank you all very much.
Old business, we've got the fall cleanup, November the 7th through the 18th. We'll start on the Norwood end of town the first week and then we'll get the rest of the town the second week. I would appreciate it if everybody could get their items out just prior to that. I know last year we ended up having to go back and pick up the same area twice and we don't want to do that going forward. It's just counterproductive. So make sure that everyone knows to set their trash out, their appliances and things of that nature prior to November the 7th. And Chris gave us an update on the street repairs already. On the next item, the ordinance for to change from a one acre to a .5 acre for raising chickens, I'd like to table that to the next council meeting. Under new business, discussion of solid waste contract, we did get two proposals. Waste management was the cheaper proposal, but there's still a $2,000 increase associated with them. We have, we are looking at the count of the number of houses, the discrepancy between what they think they're picking up and what we feel like that they should be picking up based on our records from the water department. So we'll get that part ironed out. I think everyone has a copy of their proposal. The bid number one was Waste Connections and they put it's $7.93 and Waste Services of Tennessee, Centex, was $8.83. So Waste Connections is 90 cents per house, per month, cheaper than Centex.
How much was Waste Connections?
$7.93.
I have a question, sir.
Yes, sir.
You said that Waste Connections is a $2,000 discrepancy?
No, this is a $2,000 increase from last year from the new contract.
Okay, is that in this $11,102?
$11,102 is based on 1,400 houses. Right now, on the, from the water department, we're showing 1,431 and Waste Connections counted 1,502 last week. So we've got to reconcile those two numbers. Now, we're charging $8 per house or per pickup. This is $7.93, so we would be within the budget based on 1,400. But we've got to go back and reconcile those two numbers. And I'm working on that, I've been working on that the last day and a half.
You say we're showing 1,432?
We're showing 1,432 and they're showing 1,431, sorry. So I'll get that reconciled, but would you like to discuss that before?
I'd like to discuss one thing. Are they going to furnish the containers for public and what deal, did they give us on that? Do you know?
I don't think that's part of the existing contract or the new contract either one.
We always pay extra for that.
You know what there is?
I know, sir.
We need to shop on that just a little bit because there is something out there to do with larger units, the house up there.
I would say we could probably get one of the metal companies to bring a metal instructor for free if you were talking to them.
For just metal?
For just metal.
Sometimes they're not going to be handy enough to sort it, you know, they're.
That's true.
But that's idea, but I would suggest bidding on that road and just calling them, not bidding, but pricing them, costing them cost. bidding, but pricing, cost on cost.
We'll go through and get some quotes.
I know the church uses them, and we'd always find one, it's $2,300 cheaper than the other ones.
What was the number that you said they came up with, Mayor? 15 what?
They came up with 1,502. And right now, we're showing 1,431. The last year's contract was for 1,400 units, so we applied 1,400 units to vote, just so that we'd have a number to compare to. Additional discussion? Do we have a motion to accept waste connections bid to the contract?
So do you?
I'll second.
Are you going to omit exceptions one, three, and four?
We'll accept bid number one for $7.93 per unit, and we'll reconcile their count with ours.
Mr. Mayor, ma'am? I think, I think that, do you, do you want to include in that bid to whether to include or exclude items, the exceptions to the RFP that they put?
Yes, we do. There was, there were four exceptions. Would you read those?
I think, I think they're in everybody's packet. Exceptions to RFP, number one, it talks about if a third-party company comes in, it's at our discretion if we want to stop that third-party coming in for picking up trash. We didn't feel like that we, we felt like we could strike that, and we don't need to agree to that. Number two, we're okay with, that's, that's kind of, it's talked, discussed as hazardous weight, waste, we currently utilize another container for hazardous waste anyway, so felt pretty good with that one. However, three and four brought up some, some concern on our part, so the mayor and I kind of feel like if it passes council, we could pass it to include exception number two, and we'll tell them we do not agree with one, three, and four.
I did discuss that, Will, and I said it'd be no problem to split it down.
You made the motion? I did, okay. Was your second?
Mr. Bass? Would you call roll, please?
Could I, are we going, now, what, we're voting on this?
$7.93?
I know that, but we eliminate one, three, and four.
Yes.
Can we read that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is motion by Cox and second by Bass to accept bid number one with waste connections at a bid price of $7.93 per unit with the differences in what they say the number of units, I think, which is 1,502, as compared to the cities showing 1,431 units, that'll be worked out, but 7.93 a unit, so it'll go up or down depending on the number of units actually reached and bringing on. And to exclude from their RFP exceptions number one, three, and four, and to include number two, exception number two, I think that's what y'all want to pass, isn't it?
Yes, sir. Would you call roll, please?
Robert Miller?
Yes, sir.
Jeff Bass?
Yes.
Homer Cox?
Yes.
Terry Craig?
Yes.
Terry Hall?
Yes.
Tom Chilton?
Yes.
We did have some problems with our chipper, would not go in reverse, and they have spent time, our employees correcting that problem, and they do have it repaired now. What we're trying to do is get ready for the fall cleanup. The salt truck has been repaired, and salt has been ordered for the winter. We do have a pickup that just started leaking Monday, and it was really leaking badly while it was running. You could just see the oil dripping out of it. So, we've taken that to a maintenance shop. We don't have a quote yet, we don't know exactly what's wrong with it or what it'll cost, but I'll keep you updated on that.
Which truck was it?
It was one water, uh, pickups.
We should have loaded one Ford.
I don't remember, I didn't look.
I think it's lowered, I believe it was one smaller.
But we'll keep you updated on that. We need to set a date for an employee handbook review. What's your pleasure, Will? What work? Our workshops in the past have been on Tuesday, is that still a good day for everybody? We've often named between 6:30 and 7:00.
Which Tuesday? I don't remember the date, it's much ago. 7/2, 7/6?
Oh, not discovered Tuesday?
No, let's go to the 15th.
What time?
Which one works better, 6:30 or 7:00?
7:00, you still have?
6:30.
Okay, 6:30. And this is going to require multiple workshops. We're not going to finish all this in one night. And the ATV ordinance, everyone should have that in their package. Any discussion on that?
Is that, is that what she presented last week?
Yeah.
We passed that last week.
Yeah, but all he did is put in the changes that we, that we recommended. Are there, is everybody happy with that?
Right now.
Okay.
How'd it go this past weekend, chief?
It went good. We may have had five or six come down town, not many. Ones that did behaved yourself. We wrote one ticket for Rattle when that decided he wanted to go to Subway and his sandwich. But other than that, the ones that came down town, came out of store, got their gas, and went back to their mountain.
You didn't just point it down to the festival and tell them we had a lot of good food down there?
Well, this was later than that, even about that time it was over. Because he said it was hungry, but he...
They traveled back, Fort Capseach and Cove, Capseach and Wind Rock all night.
Yeah.
Saturday night.
Yeah, they run that.
Okay, that's all the revisions that we, we asked him to make last council meeting. One more thing, on the ballot for November the 8th, we found out today that there's a referendum vote, and it's to allow alcoholic beverage consumption on the premises, which is liquor by the drink. That was not requested by the city council, it was requested by Food City. So, you'll see that on there, and you can vote the way that you want to vote, but that was a petition by Food City.
It should have been, you know, for liquor by the drink. Yeah, you get a certain amount of food if you can live there. But they should have informed us, we was not informed by Food City or the election commission.
I did talk to the election commission this morning about that, and they said, well, we put an article in the paper, and that's all they did. That is on the Anderson County ballot, the Rom County ballot, and the Waltham County ballot for those people inside the city limits.
I don't know how they got confused, but it also came out, you had to have a liquor by the drink before you could have wine in grocery stores. That does not make sense at all.
Brockway's, uh, running, running wine with you.
Write it on, you can't tell what you're running with.
Well, I got one more thing for you, because that has nothing to do with liquor.
Okay, you know, we're not here to tell you how to vote, but it's our responsibility to make sure that you're aware that it is on the ballot and not get surprised.
I was just going to say what Mr. Cox said. I was told that it was so that they could have wine at Food City. There isn't any place in Oliver Springs that will be selling liquor by the drink, as far as I'm, no.
But it opens the door.
It opens the door.
So, if somebody were to come in and request a permit, then we'd have to consider that.
Is that the city, is that the state handles the liquor?
Liquor's handled by the state, but city has to agree.
Yeah.
Well, we'll have to come up, if it passes, y'all will have to come up, Bureau will have to come up with some kind of ordinance with what regulations you want on it, whether you allow, pull out like a bar, or if it's going to be sent by register type city. It's, it'd be a lot of work on Bureau's part when, if it does, basically, get everything set.
I agree. Mr. Cox?
Yes, on the forwarders, chief, I seen two or three without helmets in town. The little boy had the accident, 16, 17 years old, maybe 15.
Yes.
Been wearing a helmet all day, they claim, but he wasn't wearing one when he ran. He's getting his face rebuilt now, I don't know if you heard about it.
Yeah.
The boy's with him was strong enough and had adrenaline going enough, he jumped on a dirt bike with him, pulled him on his dirt bike, rode one-handed with him out to get him to the rescue. I've got an, I thought we was going to discuss it more in detail, I got a folder just full of deaths on the forwarders. Tennessee since '08's lost 700 some deaths. Six, 360 was under 16 years of age. 16's minimum required to ride one. So, we like to watch them.
Yeah, I was reasoning, I didn't want to open everything up year-round on the back, on the back roads up there. It, I'm going to give you too much leeway.
And it gives, I mean, we're on private roads, I mean, we're on public roads, I mean, we're on state roads, and all of those were illegal, those that was not only, I think Utah's the only one that had them killed in parks, but they, they said they don't have them in their parks, but if they're purged, they do allow them, so I guess they have to have a motor, all the wheels and whistles. Sorry, I think so.
Is there anything else that needs to come before council? Your motion to adjourn?
So do.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Good job.